Monday, June twenty fourth, twenty twenty four, meeting of the Grafton Planning Board. We have, I think, two members there on the web. Justin?
Yes, I'm here. I'm here.
Prabu?
I'm here.
Okay. Is Natalia out there? Well, I can't tell.
She's on there, but Natalia, we can barely hear you, so.
Couldn't hear her.
I can barely hear you guys, too.
Oh, that's better. Okay, she's here.
Uh. That's all we have to do, right?
And the other.
Welcome to our new member.
Thank you.
Public input. If you have something to talk to us about that's in our purview, it's not otherwise on the agenda, uh, this is your chance.
Mr. Chair, just do a full roll call.
Yeah, just to complete the roll call.
Oh, well, we don't have to do.
We're supposed to recall a roll of everybody.
All right, well, go ahead. Do whatever you want.
Andrea?
Uh, present.
Davis, present. Bob?
Yes.
And Greg, our newest associate.
Okay. Anyway, public input? Don't see anything. That brings us to board reorganization. The first item is.
Chairman.
Now, we can do this my way or the way the selectmen do it. I prefer, I've always preferred that we know who all the candidates are and then we vote.
Yes.
Uh, for it. And I, I, after that came up with the selectmen's meeting, I thought the reason is, then you get to say yes to somebody. You don't have to say no to someone, you know, and.
So let's start out that way. Who are the candidates for chair?
No.
Any, any suggestions?
Well, I can do it, of course. I have an idea how to do it. I don't know. Who else?
I'm willing, I'm willing to do it, but I will nominate David Robbins.
And David, Dave is willing to accept that nomination?
Yeah. Anybody else? I guess it's.
Bob, you're willing to do it, right? You're also willing to do it.
I'm willing to do it, but my name isn't in the basket yet.
Oh, well, then I'll nominate.
All right. All right. Uh, any others? Okay.
Are we just discussing this?
Oh, well, we can, sure.
Oh, okay. No, I didn't know if that was the next step in the.
We make this up as we go along.
Yeah.
We can do anything we want till somebody complains.
I, I see. Well, I mean, you've been in this role for a while. Is it something that you'd like to consider keeping? Or were you looking to?
Well, I, you know, I can. I, I know how to do it.
Can, but want to.
And we got a big year coming.
Yeah.
That's, that's, okay.
Oh. I'll say my, my general position is that a board is, a board committee is most healthy when the chair and roles get moved around as the years go by, even if the members don't change overall, just that it helps with a diverse perspective as far as even how meetings run and things like that, but, you know, I know both, all three of myself, Dave and Bob have been chair at least once since I've been here. Plus, some of them was more than once, and some of us more than once for the entire time on the board.
Yeah, I would say we usually rotate the chairs, you know, so when one person holds it for one year and it moves on to another person. We don't, we haven't always done it that way. There have been times, I think, in the fourteen years I've been on the board, I think I served as chair two years in a row once. And a previous board, we had a chair that was served in two years in a row once, but mostly we take turns.
Yeah, I think I've had, might be more than once when I served more than one, one year in a row.
Yes, that does happen.
Can I say something? Now, we have two candidates. I think both are equally competent and I like both of them. I want one of them to withdraw if neither of them are withdrawing. It, it, it's, I don't think that's, I'm not in a comfortable position, but I will vote.
Anybody else? All right. Now, well.
Well, I mean, now that we've discussed it a little more, I'll, I'll, I'll vote for David since we change it up. That's, that's reasonable.
Dave, I think I'll vote for Dave.
No, you, you don't, no. Prabu?
I'll vote for Dave.
And Justin?
I'll vote for Dave, make it unanimous. Well, at least, other than you, Bob.
So, so will I. Your turn.
Okay. So I guess that means from this moment forward, I'm chair.
You want to?
I, I think I can remember on occasions, I'm not sure about this board, but in some, some bodies where the, the newly elected chair begins serving as chair of the following meeting, but most of the time, I think we've done it this way. So, moving on, moving on, we, I'll open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Bob.
Okay.
Are there any other nominations for vice chair? Anyone want to raise their hand, say, I really want to be vice chair?
I'd be happy to be vice chair again, but I'm also more than happy to vote for Bob as vice chair. He's, he does do a good job, so.
So, so far, I've heard just one nomination for vice chair, and that is for Bob. If there are no other nominations, then, uh, as a formality, we will vote. Andrea?
I vote aye for Bob.
Andrea votes for Bob. Justin?
Are you there?
Justin, are you voting for vice chair?
His, I think his video is frozen.
Oh, yeah.
Maybe. Prabu?
I'll vote for Bob.
Bob?
Justin is back.
Yeah, I'm back, sorry.
Yeah.
I vote for Bob.
And does Bob vote for Bob?
Sure. Alrighty, uh, now.
Next, we, uh, open the floor for nominations for clerk.
And nominate Justin.
I will nominate Ms. President Hand for, for clerk. I know past years, we have had our newest member on the, on the board take on the role of clerk in reading the notices. It's because we have staff, we don't need to have the clerk write minutes, so that's, it's not that involved of a, of a role. I'm willing to do it, but I, I've done it for the past two years, so I'd happily hand over the reins.
I, and Justin always does this. He does this very well. I, I second that.
You're seconding? Prabu?
Andrea, Andrea.
Okay, Prabu is supporting Andrea. Are there any other nominations? So we actually have two names in for nominations, so there's no further discussion. Put it up to a vote. Andrea?
I guess I vote for myself.
Andrea votes for Andrea. Justin?
I will vote for Andrea.
Prabu?
Vote for Andrea, too.
Bob?
Andrea.
And Dave votes for Andrea. It is unanimous.
Alrighty.
And the remainder of the reorganization is to designate planning board representatives to several different committees, starting with Central Mass Regional Planning. We have, I believe, two members that we send to CMRPC.
Yes, we send one, the fir-, our first nomination, our first designation is a member of the board. And then the second one is anyone, you know, qualified town person.
Yeah, and currently, our CMRPC representatives are Bob and.
I believe it's me. As a staff person. Natalia, do you know who the second CMRPC rep is?
I'm sorry, what?
The second CMRPC rep?
Oh, gosh, I have to look it up. Hold on.
I believe it's me.
Was it Prabu one? No. Hold on.
That was before the last reorg. I was before the last reorg.
Might it, might it have been Jim?
I, my memory is saying it was Jim.
It's Jim. It was Jim.
Yep, it's Jim.
Yep.
So since, since Jim is no longer with us, I'm, I'm guessing that maybe the board would like Bob to continue being the board's representative of CMRPC. Uh, but one of the other of us ought to step up as well. Any volunteers? Any nominations?
I can do it.
Okay. Andrea is volunteering. Any others?
I will consider that as a motion for Bob and Andrea from me for CMRPC.
And the board does.
Second that?
It doesn't matter, but.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Just, you'll be interested to know that when I, my first planning board meeting sometime back, when they got to clerk, it would have been me, except they said, you look like you ought to be on CMRPC instead. It's open, you know? Okay.
We have a motion in a second.
All right, we have a motion in a second to.
For both.
For both Bob and Andrea. Any further discussion? Hearing none.
But just to, so Bob will be the, is the delegate and Andrea will be the member?
Yep.
Okay. Confirming.
No, we're, we're both delegates, but I'm the planning board member. I'm the.
Okay, got it.
Whatever.
What, however exactly that status is described.
Yeah, that's right.
Got it.
So we'll put this to a vote. Justin?
Aye.
Prabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. Next one is the planning board's representative to the Open Space and Recreation Committee. That is currently myself. I'm willing to continue on that.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Justin?
Aye.
Prabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave votes aye. The next on the list here is a member to the Town owned Land Committee. That committee no longer exists, so we can skip that one. It somehow seems to persist itself on this list.
Yeah, well, somebody didn't go back in the files after it disappeared and deleted it from what this gets copied from.
That committee disappeared many, many years ago. We were, we had some thoughts of reviving it, but it didn't happen. All right. Community Preservation Committee. That, I believe, Justin is our representative currently?
Yes, and I'd happily continue, but if someone wants to go on it, we can talk it out.
I, I don't hear anybody else stepping up. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that Justin continued to represent the board on the CPC. Call for a vote. Justin?
Aye.
Prabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave votes aye. The Grafton Center Study Committee, it's not quite dead.
Yes, I, I established this when I was one of those chairs, um, long ago, and we, um, I've never let it go away. Um, I think I'm the only member.
We have, we have continued to designate over the years, Bob, as the board's representative to the Grafton Center Study Committee, such as it is or may be.
We can always convene the committee and flush it out if we need to talk to people about this.
So we've, we've kind of, we've kept it at least breathing, if not active. Assuming, I gather Bob is.
If there was a nomination.
Bob, Bob is willing to continue that, so will there, is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moving and seconded that the board designate Bob as our representative to the Grafton Center Study Committee. Any discussion? Hearing none. Justin?
Aye.
Prabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. We need to designate a member to the Economic Development Commission. As I recall, Prabu is our current, currently our representative on that. Am I right?
I, I, I would, I, I'm not able to participate in the meetings. They are generally in person. I have not been able to pull out of justice. I would prefer someone else step up and, uh, play the active role that might be needed then.
Who would like to represent us on the Economic Development Commission?
Can the associate member do any of this or no?
We. We have not typically had that happen in the, that I can remember, but I don't think there's anything that precludes us from nomin-, from putting an associate member in that position.
Yeah, I guess the question would be whether the board can designate a person who is not a full member of the board to represent us somewhere else. And I know that's true for a delegate there, to the CMRPC. The associate member, from a legal perspective, the associate member is, has a somewhat limited authority to vote and participate, but informally, the, the associate member is always free to participate in discussions, but, I don't know that we've ever, you know, had, had to ask the question.
Yes, and I, I frankly, I don't know the answer to that question, but my, my suggestion would be, I'm sure Greg would do a great job, but just additive an abundance of caution, pick a member of the board that's a full participating member, so we're not having to come back and vote again.
Yeah. That's probably the safe thing to do.
Yeah, same respect.
Prabu, do you remember how often the, the Economic Development Commission meetings are and what day of the week?
Once a month, and it's generally on a Monday, right before this meeting.
Okay.
And it's, it's usually not a Monday that this board has a meeting?
So, yeah, they, they try to plan it. If it happens, it'll be from six to seven.
Six to seven. I, I mean, I can do it if there's just nobody else.
I just heard Andrea volunteer to be the board's representative in EDC.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Hearing none. Justin?
Aye.
Prabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. Congratulations.
I moved.
We're gonna put you to work right away.
I, I moved to authorize the town planner to sign payroll and sign A and R plans with our, with our approval.
It was a second.
That started the, I think, we didn't, we didn't, it wasn't that formality. It was way back. Like, like we've been doing. I moved it.
Bob moved it. Is there a second?
Justin.
Second.
All right, excellent. Moved and seconded that the board authorized the town planner to sign payroll and A and R plans with the board's approval. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Justin?
Aye.
Prabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Dave votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. We have completed our reorganization. Time to, time to move ahead. Our next action item is the acceptance of the Tufts twenty twenty-three annual stormwater and parking report. The parking report was included in our meeting materials. I really didn't see anything that I caught my attention as something unusual that we need to worry about.
So, Mr. Chair, if I may, so this is, um, the annual parking, um, certification and storm, um, parking count demand, sorry. Tran-, uh, traffic demand management and parking and stormwater certification from Tufts. Um, this was submitted, this is submitted every year. Um, I compared this to the, um, previous report and double-checked the data, um, in reference to the other, Tufts, uh, recent applications that we had before, since the parking counts aligned, is also aligned with the requirements of the, of the master plan, um, in the opinion of the planning department. Um, I worked with Heidi from Tufts, uh, um, and helped her through this. I know she is on the call. She's, available to answer any questions or she wants to add anything additional, but this is the standard template, um, and if, you know, the board wants to to talk about anything specific, we, we can do that.
Any questions, comments from the board? I guess for, for what it's worth, the, the one thing I wrote down in my notes was just an observation that the, uh, the parking demand this year is slightly lower than it was last year. The adjusted demand continues to be less than the available supply. They basically report that they've, they've never been full up on parking.
Right, right, and that's because of the, and Heidi, you can jump in, um, but the staff and, uh, that, uh, working from home and the part-time schedules and, yeah, the, the universities had to pivot, so it's actually kind of working in their favor in terms of parking count.
But the interesting thing is it's on the order of nine hundred and something, right?
Yep.
And that's with rotating shifts and with people working remote, because I think they're, are, are they bigger than Wyman Gordon now? I would think so. It, it was a long time when Wyman Gordon was the largest employer.
I would say so, yes. I don't, I can, I don't know off the top of my head for sure how many employees Wyman Gordon has, but, um, I would think that they're, I, pretty close or to passing them.
You know, if you look at their parking lot, there aren't nine hundred cars there anymore.
Right.
Um, they, well, they've given up a lot, a lot of their, uh, parking lot. Well, I'll, uh, I'll move that we approve. Uh, we accept the report.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Hearing none. Justin?
Aye.
Prabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Dave votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. Our next agenda item is the matter of the request to withdraw without prejudice, the special permit application for seventeen dash twenty-seven Upton Street.
So, a little, a little confusing.
I bring us up to date on that.
I can just make the motion and that'll make it all clear.
Yeah, so just, just a little bit of background, I think, would be helpful. So, so because this is in the MBTA communities overlay, there's been a little bit of con-, confusion, you know, we're all, every town in Massachusetts is trying to navigate this correctly and, um, we had originally thought based on the AG's letter and the text within that this application should be a site plan approval only, but after digging deeper and conferring with council, um, a few more times, we've, the, the legal final opinion is that the original application of a special permit and site plan approval is the avenue forward, the legal avenue forward, based on our application to MBTA communities, based on the way our bylaw is written. So this is, uh, the final, uh, time that we have to deal with this, or this letter is requesting to withdraw the withdrawal without prejudice request. So it's very convoluted.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded that the board accept the applicant's request to withdraw the request to withdraw the special permit application. If that's not as clear as mud, any further discussion? Hearing none. Justin?
Aye.
Prabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. We get that little matter off the table.
Yes.
Alrighty, next up, we have a request for determination of minor modification at ninety-five Wesson Street. For anybody who'd been looking at meeting materials, a, a, a revised request has come in, so that's what we will be addressing.
Yes.
Good evening. My name's Norman Hill. First, I'd like to welcome Greg and Andrea. I, I am president of land planning. I'm also a licensed civil engineer and a licensed land surveyor. I'm here tonight on behalf of Holden Farm. There are two con-, conditions of the special permit, that they, they, they're willing to honor it, but they would like some flexibility as to the type of materials used. So the first, uh, condition has to do with the handicap accessible surfaces. If you recall, there was a crosswalk in some sidewalk areas that were to be made handicap accessible, and our site plan had labeled it handicap accessible surface. In the approval document, it's, it calls out a specific plastic grid, which my client has priced out to be a cost of about fifteen thousand, plus it would be the labor to install it. So what they would rather do is go with stone dust. The stone dust hardens up. It's an adequate surface for handicap accessibility. So they'd like to do the sidewalk in the areas designated on our plan, the same areas, but instead of do, using the plastic, they'd like to use stone dust. So that's the first request. The second request has to do with a condition that said the corners of the five acre parcel are to be monumented with survey markers. My client's willing to do that, but out back where he's plowing his fields, he doesn't want us to put steel pins or granite bounds out back, just all the points out front, but out back, he'd like us to use stakes. So we're asking, I, I submitted a, a, a drawing that showed which monument would be set where, but each corner would be monumented, but the points out back where it has farm equipment, those would just be wooden stakes. If, if I put a steel pin out there, our pins are thirty inches long, five inches, inch, five eighths of an inch in diameter, it could punch your tire, it could damage his, his plow rig, so he doesn't want those pins out back. He'd like us to just put stakes out back, but all the other points would be permanent markers.
I'd just like to add, I spoke with, um, Mr. Berger, who's our ADA coordinator in town, and he did not have any concerns about the stone dust path. I also spoke to Graves Engineering just to get a second opinion, and they, they just made a point to say, you know, the, the stone dust path isn't a problem, but underneath, just as long as that area is not susceptible to getting, you know, muddy and it would compromise like the integrity of the path. Other than that, they didn't have concerns. The stakes, uh, you know, it's up to the board. Uh, I just want to make sure that there's some way that we can, the pound, the town will be able to know what the area is going forward, because it's a four, you know, it's just a small, it's a percentage of the farm and there's, we have a, you know, entire permit conditioned around this one area.
I'm concerned, I, I, you know, I don't know what these stakes would look like, but I'm concerned that they're not going to be there too long.
They're thirty inches long, they're one inch by one inch, and they're oak. They should last three to five years, as long as he doesn't hit them with a plow. If he hits them with a plow, they're gone.
Do they extend above the ground?
Yeah, they would be above the ground about, about twenty-six inches.
So you got four inches in the ground?
Yeah, four, five inches, yeah. Unless the ground's real soft, then they'd go in deeper.
Yeah, um.
Chair, can I, can I just ask a question about this?
Yeah.
So, can you tell me what's the purpose of these stakes? Because I, I know a lot of farmers and I don't know where they've had to put stakes in. I just, when, when did this come up? Because I didn't hear it in the last meeting.
So it's about a fifty acre site. It's about a fifty acre site. So four point nine acres are designated for this special permit. And I, I could ask Fiona, I, I think the purpose is just so, if you're standing there and you're directing parking, like park here, park here, you have to park within that four point nine acres. You can't park beyond it, so you need to know where the boundaries are of that area. So I think, I think the purpose is just to designate so people can see where the boundaries are.
Right, exactly. So we, yeah, we can understand and see where the area is, because we don't, we want it to stay, it, it's very specifically needs to be in that four point nine acre area. And we need to have some sort of metric that we can look at going forward and say, okay, this is the area.
Yeah, my, the, the one question that occurred to me as his readings on the, on the first part, you know, but I, I was wondering whether the stone dress was, stone dust was acceptable as a surface, and you answered that.
It is, it is.
And then with the uh with the markers, uh I'm assuming that generally speaking, you're not expecting to. To plow over or through those the areas where the markers are, but it is possible. So that, so that, I think, as I understood, the rea- the the reason for requesting wooden markers is is in case you do run over the markers with a tire. Or through it with a plow, that you don't want to damage the equipment, and so.
Yes, hi Tyler Holden, so if you look on the map there, that whole section that is actually in our planting of corn. We have like three plantings of corn there, uh I conventionally till it, uh we cultivate, we sp- uh go in and spray. I mean, that is our normal field that we have always for as long as I can remember, put our first and second plant in the corn. Uh we have to remember this is a. This is a dual use now where we're, you know, using it for, you know, ag and. Let's call it, you know, agri entertainment, um, so I'm just saying in there, a hundred percent. It 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 would affect our ability to grow produce and move forward in a matter like we always have. And the far points on the four point nine where I'm talking, uh where the triangles I believe are. No one would ever park down there, if you look at the elevation there, it's, you know, it's dropping down significantly, uh can we? In a field full of loom, so would never put cars there.
So so those four locations are actually, some are all within the areas that you're actively cultivating.
Yeah, yeah, I it's, I'm gonna be picking corn there in three weeks probably.
Which ki- kind of calls into question the value of having a marker in the middle of the cornfield.
Yeah, and not, I mean, it's, I don't.
And the plowing, this this is a seasonal use, just remember, so it's May to October, I believe we said, um you're gonna be plowing during that time.
Yeah. I work those fields seven days a week.
Now, I'll just, I'd like to add something, because as I was reading through this tonight and I didn't understand how this came up after we went through all this, it came before the planning board, this hadn't come up before. I just want to remind all of us from the town meeting that we were at, how many people showed up to support Holden Farms? And this is an elected board of people here, and, you know, when the whole town shows up to support. A a business and and a farm where they're raising, you know, they're trying to cultivate, they're they're making their living out there. We we want to make this process as easy as possible for them, and it's safe for our community, of course, but. You know, it just seems like there's just one hoop after next coming to us and, you know, I. When we did table the last one and made the select board, you know, vote on the hours, but. I just, you know, I just want to make sure that we know that the town is behind this farm as we're sitting here making these decisions, that's all I'll say.
The pro- the problem is, for the next person who comes and asks to not have to put in bounds. He's gonna say, you let them do it, um and we're gonna have a, you know. It's important for us to be consistent, we find ourselves in court talking about things the board did eighteen years ago, so.
No, I understand that.
Recently seen that, so that's why I'm I'm looking for a, is there a. Is there a a a way to sink a marker, you know, that can be found with?
Would the board take a uh site visit and, I mean, I'm, I mean, I can show you guys it, so you can fully, it's just, it's not. It's not feasible anyway.
No, but I'm asking.
Maybe an eight foot long two by four?
Four feet into the ground.
I'm serious, pressure treated two by four, eighteen long? See.
I'm tell, I'm telling eighteen inches at minimum.
Yeah.
You know, i- if we have erosion down through that field because we have bad storms, I have to dig. A swale to capture the water and put it into, you know, it's, i- it's, that's our, that's our farmland. We don't have a whole lot of good farmland, seeing how we're, you know, on such an elevation and uh, I mean. I, wh- what other farms are really gonna be coming with this same plan for a special permit is my only. You know, I understand we gotta set how we're gonna do this and move forward with everyone, but.
I have the ability to reset those points at any time, we just got all our GPS unit and that goes right here. And also, any surveyor could do that, could reset those points at any any time. Yeah, that was the other part, the other note I had written to myself was, suppose those markers do get.
Disappear and they start parking cars down the hill and.
How how hard is it to put them back and and I just heard the answer to that?
Well, just.
Like, can we pull ties and not do offsets, like for all my irrigation pipe running through and diversion?
Being like a fifty foot offset, I mean, you plow that whole, you plow that whole hillside.
Yeah, pull off a certain points, and then and then you have those points, that's how you tower.
So, any land surveyor could go out and reset those points, or meets and bounds to each point.
Yeah.
Just take the plan and.
Yeah, I think.
Could reset points easily.
Well, while, you know, you know, it's good to have the boundaries clearly marked, I do have a problem with. Requiring a marker in the middle of, uh in the middle of the cornfield where you're actually, you're doing something useful there and I. Yeah, I I would, I would prefer not to force you to try to work around a marker.
So, w- we're setting permanent markers on all all six points near the road, like, I mean, they're two hundred feet from the road, but. Those nearest points, those six nearest points to the road are all going to be set with permanent markers.
May- maybe if um. Our decision includes requiring, or or some sort of requirement that should the locations be needed. By the town, uh that they're responsible for marking them, you know, doing what you're saying.
Yeah, Justin's hand is up. Justin?
Sure, my only question is, are the two markers on the northwest side, the two that are closest to parking? Designated parking, are those also susceptible to the tilling and and such that was discussed?
Yes, each triangle represent a potential wooden stake that could be torn out, each triangle.
Yeah, I, my question related to this, the fact that there's parking designated right along that section where those two triangles are.
That's correct.
So, it, I just wasn't sure that those would be susceptible to the same issues that the northeast ones are.
So where those triangles are running along in the back corner by the reserve parking, that is actually a big diversion swill from NRCS. Um, so that captures all of our head water from up top at the farm.
Okay.
Goes down and puts it into drainage and, so that all has to be maintenance in mode and. Up kept to where the USDA and NRCS wants us to, you know, keep it.
But it's a recognizable feature, I mean, there's a a dip and a, there's a bump in the dip that you can see running across the hillside. That would stay, that bump in that dip has to stay for drainage purposes. So, if that 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 side is clearly marked with that evidence, but if you ask them all, the stakes will disappear.
Okay.
I can repeat my suggestion, I think that would. That would, uh, you think? Did you?
Yeah, I, I think I like your idea, Bob, that.
Conversation's been going a lot of places, so, just to, just to re- repeat a few of, uh, um, I was saying.
Manage in the decision that it's a requirement. That they locate the points if it becomes necessary. They have the response, you know, we don't have to hire our surveyor, um, you 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 have to, when 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 somebody up here. Says, we gotta know where those corners are, you've gotta find them.
Yep, yeah, if that works for the rest of the board. The 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 request ultimately here is to say whether this, whether the board would consider this as a minor modification.
Right, that's the.
Is someone else trying to move that we find these to be minor modifications?
Second.
Moved a second and they the, you know, the uh.
Uh, well. Minor, well, we could do it all in 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 that, and uh the the proviso, I just. Oh, approve the request with the proviso that I just outlined.
Second.
Okay.
You got enough to work with Fiona?
Mm-hmm, yeah, I'll I'll make sure to include in the the letter what we just, what was.
Yeah, the board, the board wants to make sure that the, these boundary locations can be easily located if and when necessary.
It's the responsibility of the.
The applicant.
Of the applicant to make the location if it's necessary.
That work? Any other discussion? Hearing none, Justin?
Aye.
Rabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave votes aye, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you very much.
Everyone take care, thank you. Get to work, guys.
Thank you.
Alrighty, we have one more action item, a another minor modification request. This one is at uh five to seven Main Street. With my good friends Mike and Mark here. Good evening.
Congratulations, everybody, in your new positions.
Mike, it's been a while.
Yes, sir, nice to see you.
And he's out of sweatpants, Bob, I want you to recommend his.
Just for the, just for the occasion. So what are we, where are we at with this, what do we have?
So, the, uh when the uh applicant was going before the building department, um there. We realized that there was a snafu with the parking, so the p- the plans that were originally presented by the engineer prior to mark during our hearing process. Are called for um, uh, a certain amount of parking spaces, but at the time, um, the uh, the engineer didn't. Disclose that there was going to be thirteen hundred square feet of office space in one of the buildings and there was. No way we could have read their minds to know that, but now that the, now that the applicant is secured a new team and is before the um. The building department trying to get their building permits, um, the parking needs to be modified and they need five additional spaces. Um, so they're requesting uh that the board review the revised plan that was turned in and consider uh. A determination, consider this to be a determination of minor modification. Um, I checked with the, obviously I've been convert uh uh conferring with the building department about this. Um, who did did not have an issue with the location and. Uh, and with the process, I also conferred with the fire department, who they had a comment, but the comment wasn't about. Didn't really pertain to the new spaces that were added on the revised plan, it was the, about the spaces that were already approved by the board. Um, so I think that that was just a. An o- uh, just a mishap, because my Mark will speak to this, but he overlaid the original. The the this plan with the underlying plan, so it should, it should align exactly as it was before, so. Um, let me know if that doesn't make sense, but but he, yeah, but basically the this this, those spots that the fire department called out are in the same. Position as they were originally, um, so the applicant could speak to this more, but the. There is a little, there is a sense of urgency as they've gotten this far in the process and we're, you know, just trying to to work with them. Um, at this stage and help them out, so.
So, you're adding, you're actually, what, paving, a larger area?
Uh, no, no, sir, let let me explain, um, through the chair. The um five additional spaces are on a space that is already proposed to be impervious pavement. As you can see on the the plan, um, on the on the monitor, there there are spaces twenty one through twenty five. The uh, the comment from the the fire department was relative to the the ori- the five, the twenty spaces that are previously approv- approved by the board. And I, uh, those are unmodified, I I used the CAD drawing and left those exactly as they were and and just for sanity check. Fiona brought it up to me this afternoon, I went home and I, the old fashioned way, opened up, I actually still have a light table and I I turned the light table on and I. Put them over each other and made sure I didn't have a scaling error or anything and they are identical, so. The the twenty spaces that were previously approved are un- unmodified, so our our request tonight is just to add five more spaces.
Is this basically then just marking them?
Striping.
Striping. I think that's a minor modification.
Yep.
I'd even move that.
I I think I just wrote a motion.
Yeah, and I might even include in my motion, um, to grant it, to grant the request.
I'll second that.
Very good, moved and seconded, any discussion of the motion?
My only comment is this, these extra five spots look to be in a very awkward position, especially where they're angled away from the entrance. Half, but that said, I don't think it's gonna be a, it doesn't affect my vote, it's just a awkward note, but that's a factor of the site design.
You're just, you're just commenting out the the site design is is limiting, it's it's a little awkward. Um, and I just wanna reiterate, you know, we're in discussion, so I just want to say that this brings the application. In comply, into compliance of the bylaw, which is the most important thing.
So, originally, why did you not have any parking beside these buildings, why was it all?
In reality, I need six parking spaces for both buildings for my staff, and that's it. This twenty, twenty-five spots, originally I was told twenty, that's why we kept it away from the front of the building, all in the back. In all honesty, my guys are still gonna pack in the original spots, I'm bad. This is just a, on paper thing, I I, I don't want to get that many employees to fill up that many spots, because then I go going to build it. You know, I'm good where we are.
This is, this is to satisfy the parking requirements of the zoning bylaw.
That's all it is for paper purposes only, we're not gonna fill that under any circumstances.
But it does protect the applicant in the future, for that, in that it, now it complies with the zoning bylaw for for the buildings that are proposed. So, if there, if there is an expansion, the the spots are available. There is a motion on the floor, if there's no further discussion, we'll call for a vote, Justin?
Aye.
Rabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
Dave votes aye, motion carried unanimously, carry on. Fiona will take care of the paperwork part of this.
Have a good night, Tony, please, thank you.
Thank you. Alrighty, let's see, it is now seven forty-nine, do we, should we move quickly through the bills and correspondence, so. I think there's not like they even, we'll come, we'll circle back to a staff report after the hearings. So, I think we have some bills?
Move that we uh pay the bills, approve the bill, pay, approve payment of the bills.
Moved and seconded that we pay our bills, any discussion? Hearing none, Justin?
Aye.
Rabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Yeah.
Dave votes aye, motion carried unanimously, we don't have any minutes of previous meetings, was there anything in correspondence that anybody wanted to discuss? Hearing none, as I said, I'll, we'll circle back to staff report after we do the hearings, it is now seven thirty plus. And we have several public hearings to undertake here. Beginning with a new request for special permit and site plan approval at fifty-six Aspen Avenue. For which.
Um, may I, Mr. Chair, make a recommendation, um, one of the hearings is submitted a continuance request?
Yes, let us, let us, let us just take that out of order. Take. We have a public hearing, it is an item E on our list of hearings, was gonna be the last one we took up. Request for plan approval at five Millennium Drive. If anyone's here for that, the applicant has submitted a request to continue this hearing to July eighth. So, uh. A motion to grant said request would be in order?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Moving a second at the board grant the applicant's written request to continue this hearing to Monday, July eighth, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Justin?
Aye.
Rabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Dave votes aye, motion carried unanimously, that's. Out of the way for the moment, so let's circle back to our first public hearing and uh, let's see. Our our clerk will read. The hearing notice, this is for fifty-six Aspen Avenue.
Pursuant to sections one point five point seven and one point three point three of the Town of Grafton zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, commencing at seven thirty PM in the conference room A. Of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, to consider an application for special permit and plot, site plan approval request for an.
For an accessory apartment located at fifty-six Aspen Avenue, shown as Grafton's accessories map. One twenty-nine lot seventy-two, said property is located at a medium density residential R twenty zoning district. The applicant owner, Jessica Gillette, that's right, a copy. Of the application plan is available for the public inspection at the planning department during regular business hours on or. On the town of Grafton website at www.grafton-mash.gov, on the planning department development project webpage.
Alright, Fiona, can you?
Sure, I'll give a.
Off here?
Yeah, absolutely, so I'll give a, I know, so the, um, applicant is proposing a spa- a special permit for an accessory apartment. Um, there, the request is to construct eight hundred and forty-five square feet specifically in the basement of their, um. Roughly twenty-five hundred square foot home, um, the accessory apartment will include. They have a, a, a plan submitted in the package here, but I'll just call out that they will include, um, two bedrooms, a combined living room and kitchen. A combined bathroom and laundry area and a storage area with a utility closet. Um, the, the accessory apartment will be contained within the footprint of the existing home with the primary, um. Uh, means of ingress and egress being, uh, stairs leading to the, uh, top of the, um, the first floor of the home. The, I, when I reviewed this, um, there was a couple of things that I pointed out in my memo. Um, that I, you know, would invite the applicant to just confirm, but ultimately, this is a. Relatively low, low impact, just the design of and the location of the, um, accessory unit is, um, it's not. Increasing the, the building footprint, um, the folks that will be, um, living there, uh, the applicant will have her parents. Live with her, um, and allow them to, um, be with their grandchildren, so they, they are related per our bylaw, um. And, yeah, I think, I just wanna, uh, confirm if somebody is here on behalf of the applicant, um. The access, uh, to and from the garage, just the access to and from the garage to the accessory apartment. Um, and if any other, you know, additional work is proposed, um, as part of this that we may be missing sometimes, that that happens where. They go for a building permit and something comes up, so I just wanna make sure that we are covered there. Um, but in terms of requirements for, you know, parking and compliance with other aspects of the zoning bylaw, nothing was, was flagged. And, yeah, and I would also like them to confirm, you know, the location of the internal door between the main home and the accessory apartment, just so it's abundantly clear. Um, sometimes the plans don't always show that, um, this is the parking plan. Uh, there will be three cars now parked in the garage or, um, in the driveway slash garage.
Two in the, two in the garage?
Two in the, sorry, yeah, two, it, two in the two car garage and, um, one in the, uh, in the driveway.
It appears to me, and I think, you know, the applicant can confirm this or comment on this, but. It appears to me that although the floor plan makes it look like maybe the garage is connected to the basement, the picture of the house. Seems to show that the garage is actually, uh, a- actually on the main level, so there is no. No possible connection between the garage and the accessory apartment.
Yeah, yeah, and I, I, yeah, I just wanted to, yeah, make it clear.
It's not immediately clear by looking at that plan that that's the case.
Yes. Is somebody here on behalf of the applicant?
Jessica Gillette seems to be here.
Uh, Jessica, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, um, so there actually is a door off of one of the, uh, this is actually not a great plan. There's an outside door, um, off of one of the bedrooms currently, so there's like a sliding door down in the basement right now. So there's outdoor access into the apartment, the garage is on the first level, it's not connected to the basement.
I'm sorry, can you just, can, can you say that again?
Yeah, sorry.
No, 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 it's okay, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm understanding.
Okay, so there is a door downstairs in the basement that goes outside.
Okay.
And there's two windows down there also for, in each bedroom.
Okay, so that door exists to exit into the, uh, exit outside and then obviously the door, uh, um, the stairwell heading upstairs.
Yes.
Okay.
Is this a walkout basement? Uh, uh, I'm sorry, can I ask a question?
Sure, yeah.
Yeah, cause I live in this community, uh, I'm just curious, is this a walkout basement that you are talking about, uh, Jessica?
Yes.
That's what you mean by the slider?
Yes, yeah, it's not, it's a walkout, yep.
Do the bedrooms have? Exits other than their doors?
Yeah, so there's a window in each bedroom, or there will be, there's two windows down there and a door.
I think those have to be more than just a small, they, there's a safety requirement, I think. For basement, uh, bedrooms.
I would, I would expect this to be compliant with all appropriate building codes.
Yes.
That, uh, that Mr. Mr. Burger will make sure that it's compliant.
I don't, I don't know specs on the windows, but, yeah.
So I actually, I got the, um, I just got the building permit approved today. Um, so I have like an updated drawing than what you guys have.
Do you have it on you? Are you on your computer?
Yeah, I mean, I can put it in the chat, would that be helpful?
I'll, I'll make you, um, I'll allow you to share your screen, I just think it's important for us to, to just fully understand what, um.
Yep, one second.
I don't wanna, we will wanna make sure staff gets a copy of that to have for the records as well, for sure, but. The screen shares should be good enough for right now.
I might be able to get it on viewpoint. Okay, can you see my screen?
Mm-hmm, can you just make it a little bigger?
Yes, wah, sorry. So this is a window, this is a window, and this is a door.
Okay, and you'll need egress windows, the building department will review on that?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, and this is all in the viewpoint, um, our on- online viewpoint permitting system, so, okay, so the building department didn't have any other outstanding. Concerns and looked over this and already.
Yes.
Gave it the okay, so.
And so, what, go ahead, Fiona, sorry.
Yeah, just, just so it's, it's clear, I, th- this board knows this, but just for folks out there, uh, we are. This board is responsible for approving the use, we don't get into the nitty gritty with the specifics of the interior, that is what the building permit is for. Um, we are just approving the, the use and the ability to have the accessory apartment in, in this area. Um, that's the, this board's responsibility, so I just don't want that to be conflated, but Justin, sorry, go ahead, cut you off.
So, you said one of the residences will be parking in the garage as well, so just to help my own head around it, they'll park in the garage. They'll exit through the, the parking opening of the garage and then walk around back in, in theory to access the apartment.
Yes, or come in through the house.
Yep. Yeah, I was just imagining the, the way to access this without entering your living space, in theory, cause it's an accessory apartment.
The residents are her parents.
Yeah, of course, that, that's how it usually is, but there's always the.
Right.
Still like to, still like to avoid the living spacing situation if you can, in some cases, so just to understand how that would work.
This, this answered my, my concerns that I flagged in my memo, um, and just. So I'm absolutely a hundred percent sure that there's, this is the, this is the entirety of the scope of work and there's nothing, you know, there's no. Additional i- increase in the building footprint.
No.
Okay.
There is a public comment about parking on the roads.
Yep. Okay, let me pull that, alright, so you, Jesse, you can stop sharing your screen now.
Okay.
Okay, and I will share.
Good evening, Chairman and the Board members.
Um, yep.
Good evening, Board Chairman and the Board members, I am Vijay Chadri, and I live at fifty-three Aspen Avenue, right opposite two fifty-six. And I'm the first owner of the house, staying there for nineteen years, so everything is good. But I have submitted the proof that the applicant is saying there will be one extra car. But if you go even now, you will see two big trucks standing on the main road, one of them being a commercial vehicle. And I'm afraid when I'm backing out my car from the driveway, I can hit one of them, so if you add one more car to that, I don't know where that car would be. It, it would be just like a parking place other than a house. And it is affecting like, I'm worried about the snow too, like what will happen that time, and I've submitted some proof of the. Pictures of the cars and the trucks I'm talking about, if you may please review that. Like, these are standing most of the time. So when you add one more car to this, you can imagine what will be the plight of the, the neighbors who are staying in that area.
So there is a provision through, you know, the zoning enforcement officer would, would need to typically step in here, um. Be, um, there's a specific, uh, regulation in our bylaw about, um. Garaging, uh, commercial vehicles of this nature in a, in a structure off of the road, so.
That's our question, because, as I told, I've been living for so many years, I had no problem with anyone, but seeing the truck day in, day out, it worries me. And I do feel impacted, it just starts to my heart. So I would request you to kindly consider that and please help to resolve at this speed, like any other car comes, that's different story.
Yeah, so, so I think it's, just if I may, Mr. Chair, that this. So there's the application that's in front of us, that's proposing three cars off of the right of way, which is allowed in. Compliance with the bylaw, but this is, this is a concern being flagged by a member of the public about additional cars. At, at this property, um, the, the, um, trucks rather, at this property that, um, will need to be, um. I'll, I'll need to, to work with the zoning enforcement officer on, on that.
My other concern is right, I may be not knowing the fact that if you're building another unit downstairs. What is the probability it won't convert to a multifamily house rather than a single family home, that's what we have currently in all the houses out there.
No, this is, this is an accessory apartment, it is by the special permit we. For grant for it, it's something we do, will limit its use to family.
But what if like rental, it can be used as a rental unit or something, become a multifamily house?
This would not allow it to become a multifamily house, not that there's anything wrong with multifamily homes, mind you.
No, no, that, that is correct, but the thing is, the issue is, is not the unit itself, but the places around that. If you like, I showed you the condition, like if two families and each one has a two or three cars, so.
Yeah, that's, that's not an issue here, this, this, this is not a permit for something like that.
And then that's what, I'm, I don't know the facts, so I'm just.
Now, this is, this is, this is limited. To the use as an accessory, not as a separate, completely separate unit.
Plus, if you can help me with this talk, because I don't know where to go, I did contact some of the folks here that did not. Provide any answers to me, so I thought let me come to the hearing and ask my, the question.
The condition that we usually put in a decision, do, does it say? That, uh. Should the property be transferred, that this, that this permit, permit needs to be redone?
Right, that's correct.
So this only, um, the permit is only for them when they're, while they're in that house. So when the house sells, this permit doesn't go with it, and that, the buyer, if they wanted to use it. Would have to come in and.
Okay, that is.
Yeah, and, uh, we, you know, I, I've forgotten the exact term we use, but basically family.
Yeah, I don't mind family staying, but I don't want it to be sort of become a.
Yeah, that's, that's not an issue here, this, this, this permit will be limited to this owner. And this owner's family occupying the accessory apartment.
And about the trucks, if you can help me out, that's very great. So what did you, so what, like, it has to be some other process I have to go through to work on this truck standing outside all the time?
The trucks and stuff, yeah, they take that up with the building inspector, the building department.
Yeah, so, uh, they got a formal, um, you know, you can send an email directly to, to myself and then, um. CC Mr. Burger, or I can, um, I'll, I can send him a note saying, you know, this came up at the hearing and. That's the, it, the complaint needs to be lodged and then, um, the investigation is, is conducted and then the enforcement is.
Okay.
Is done from there, so.
Yeah, okay, thank you very much.
Anything else, any other comments, questions from the board? Any other comments, questions from the public, either here in person or on Zoom?
I move we close the hearing and direct staff to prepare a draft decision.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none.
One very, one very brief thing, Dave, I just would like the, that floor plan we brought up from the building inspector's. Thing just to be put in our record because we were concerned about that egress, that the windows show, so just having our record, we, good to have here. Have trouble hearing me, Bob, or?
I can hear you.
Okay.
Any other discussion? Put it to a vote, Justin.
Aye.
Rabu.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Dave votes I, motion carried unanimously, the hearing is closed, the draft decision will. Most likely be prepared for the board to vote on at the next meeting, which would be July eighth. Next on the agenda, we have a new request for a scenic road permit at forty-four Adams Road. Legal notice for it?
Pursuant to Article twenty-four of the general bylaws of the town of Grafton and scenic road regulations. The planning board will hold a public hearing on Monday, June twenty-fourth, at twenty twenty, uh, twenty twenty-four, at seven thirty PM in the conference room A. At the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, Grafton, Mass. To consider an application for a scenic road permit for alterations to the stone wall and tree clearing for a driveway opening located at. Forty-four Adams Road and shown as Grafton Accessories Map fifty, lot forty-four. Said property is located in a low-density residential R forty zoning district, the applicant owner, Eric Curtis. A copy of the application plan is available for public inspection at the planning department during regular business hours or on the town of Grafton's website at. www.grafton.m-a.gov, on the planning department and development projects webpage.
Alright, get this going?
Yes, so sorry, bear with me for one second while I pull up my, so, um. Scenic road application for forty-four Adams Road, as Andrea just noted, um, pretty standard from what we, we've seen. Um, the, they're requesting a curb cut and eighteen inch break in the stone wall along Adams Road to construct a driveway to lead to a, a, a new home. Um, eighteen, uh, feet is the standard size for driveway applications that we see in town, so no, no concerns were raised there. Um, the applicant is proposing to reuse the removed, um, and stockpile stones to fortify the walls on both sides of the. Potential opening, the applicant is also offering to have a, uh, mason repair sections that are in poor condition with. Um, surplus stones, um, that are removed, uh, no stones will leave the site. And the wall will be identical to what currently, um, exists in terms of location, height with and style, uh. And style, uh the applicant will be removing trees, but they are on his private property as confirmed when we went out to the. Site, I went out with the tree warden last Thursday to just confirm that everything looked good, he had no issues and did not. Believe it was necessary to um. You know, review the app uh application under the shade tree by law, you know, that it's not applicable here um. Other than that, I don't, you know, I don't have too much, there was a couple of things that I noticed when I. Pulled up some, you know, I I just went, I I provide a summary in my memo, but um some outstanding um. Requirements in terms of the deed and whatnot, but that isn't pertaining to what what is in front of us, this is just for the scenic road. And so that's all we're really, this board needs to focus on. Um I'm happy to answer any questions and I don't know if the applicant is here or online, but.
Yes, uh I'm present.
So if the anyone has any questions for the applicant or myself?
No, no particular questions, an observation of sorts. Uh this particular lot. Some of the history of it related to the town goes back about twenty-four years. The town purchased the Hennessy property uh under chapter sixty-one. And set aside some frontage lots to be sold to recoup some of the funds that the town spent to purchase the land. This is the last remaining lot of those frontage lots. And one of the reasons that it's taken till now to get this done was that this lot had an affordability restriction on it.
Yes.
And uh. The town eventually, you know, in 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 as much as the 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 lot was really not marketable with the affordability restriction. The town in July of twenty twenty removed the affordability restriction. Which freed up this lot to actually be sold and developed. Uh Fiona, your memo did not note it, did not note the removal of the affordability restriction.
Is that um a town meeting?
That was a vote of the select board on July twenty-first, twenty twenty, recorded in book six, three, four, five, two, page one, four, two. For your information. But yes, it was did not require a town meeting vote to remove that restriction.
The restriction was in. The subdivision uh and the special permit for the subdivision?
The restriction was in the deed, I don't know the, I don't recall, I didn't look to see.
Okay, I'll I will make sure to note that properly.
Just just for the record, the affordability restriction is no longer present.
Thank you.
Which is neither here nor there as far as the scenic road permit is concerned.
But, yeah.
So it does this represent a sale that the town will be receiving?
The town sold this lot to um I forget the name, I was I was reading it this afternoon, I forget the name of it, but. Doesn't really matter, but the town sold all the lots, the the owner to whom the town sold the lots was unable to turn around and sell this lot. Because of the restriction. But other than that, it's a straightforward. Rather obviously necessary opening in the stone wall to accommodate a driveway with the stone wall otherwise preserved. And in fact, appear apparently it's intended to be improved.
Yes.
I wonder if anybody has.
So any other, any other questions, comments from the board, any questions or comments from the public?
This is this is very straightforward, I think the only way this wouldn't be necessary is if. The Popular Mechanics Magazine from like nineteen seventy-four that predicted flying cars would have been accurate.
Oh yeah, maybe they could have dug a tunnel underneath the stone wall. Well, that's probably impractical though. A a bridge over the stone wall, how about that? Back 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 to reality, if there is nothing else, that if there are no other comments or questions, may perhaps they.
We close the.
Hand up! Hand up!
Public hearing. And uh. Direct staff to prepare a decision for us, I think we, I think we have to do that. Uh which includes all of the promises in this, you know, about the the way that works to be done.
Yep, yep.
Moved and seconded, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Justin.
Aye.
Prabhu.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
And Dave votes aye, motion carried unanimously. Uh hopefully the paperwork for this will be before the board for approval in two weeks. Barring any unforeseen circumstances that prevent that from happening.
Yes, and that's the plan.
I know, I mean, the office has nothing to do with it, they'll get right on it tomorrow.
Yes, no, we're barely, we're really bored in that.
Alrighty, moving moving along then, we have another.
Thank you, Eric.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Another request for a special permit and site plan approval for an accessory apartment at one Bedford Drive.
Yep. So.
Andrea.
Pursuant to sections one dot five dot seven and one dot three dot three of the town of Grafton zoning bylaws. The planning board will hold a public meeting on Monday, June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-four, commencing at seven thirty P M in the conference room A. Of the Grafton Memorial Municipal Center, thirty Providence Road, to consider an application for a special permit and site plan approval request for an accessory apartment located at one Bedford Drive. Shown here on the Grafton Accessories Map, thirty-six, lot eleven. Said property is located in medium-density residential R twenty zoning district. The applicant is James Crossman and the owner is Ke- Kenneth Bonin. A copy of the application slash plan is available for public inspection at the planning departments during regular business hours or on the town of Grafton website at. Grafton dot M A dot gov on the planning department developments project webpage.
Okay.
Good evening, board, how you doing? Thank you for your time, uh I'm the applicant, James Crossman, on behalf of the Bonin family, Kenny, Robin and Matt. We appreciate your consideration for this permit. So any questions or concerns, we're here to answer.
Brief description?
Yes, sure, yep, so um the applicant's requesting to construct a two-story, seven hundred and twenty square foot addition. In the form of an attached two-car garage with the accessory apartment above. Um they're also proposing this, just to be clear, the applicant is is included in the narrative information about the driveway widening. From twenty feet to thirty feet, that is not something that this board has any say over, that will be a driveway permit through the.
And no, I think and and that's, I think that's a mistake uh on the wording, uh we're we're not looking to go thirty feet wide. That 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 would be depth, that would be off the road that way, we're only looking to go the normal width of a two-car garage. Drive way, you know, you're gonna have two, the buildings, the building, the the two-car garage, it's a normal, it'd be a normal width. Uh as a two-car garage driveway.
Okay, and okay, so I'll make a.
Yeah, I'll find that in the notes too, I think that was a maybe backwards thing, uh.
Okay.
I think the depth is thirty feet off the road.
Yeah.
Okay, off the road to the front of the house, but widthwise, we would be the same width, we we would be the same width as the addition. Okay, the addition's twenty-four feet, the dr- the driveway would be twenty feet. Slightly in, two 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 feet in from each side.
Okay, so but you you know, in any event, we have no say over that, so I just wanted that to be clear because that that was part of the description. So um the accessory apartment that's being proposed will include two bedrooms with closets, a living room, a kitchen. And a combined bathroom and laundry area, um there'll be an internal door between the two-car garage and the main home. Um I already spoke to the building inspector about this, but the presence of the door um. Confirms that, you know, one of our key requirements is that the accessory apartment is substantially contained within the existing building. Um the two garage doors and the doors of the main home will be the only means of entry and exit. Um correct me if I'm wrong on that, but that's what I.
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
The two garage doors and the doors um um of the main home are the only means of entry and exit into the accessory apartment.
Right, there'll be the two garage doors and there'll be a there'll be a man door on that in into the garage as well.
Okay.
So there'll be two garage doors and a man door, three-foot man door located within the. To enter the garage door, to enter the garage and then there'll be stairs going up and and then there will be a deck with stairs in the back.
Mm-hmm, yep, and the and the deck to the stairs in the back is gonna go up to the.
Exactly.
Yep, so.
The second egress, yeah.
Yep, and then other than that, um the you know, the application uh is was proposed to the board, um so the applicant can have um their son live with them. Um and help with all things um around the home and and otherwise, uh so. You know, our bylaw requires that the um a relative through blood or marriage is a resident, which they are in this case, so.
I I think it's our policy.
Yes.
Not our bylaw.
The thing, right, the bylaw doesn't actually have that restriction.
Oh.
That's been the board's policy over many, many, many years.
The definition?
It's actually, the the bylaw does not require the re- the family occupancy restriction.
Oh, okay, I stand corrected, I thought that was.
Small technicality, but it's.
In any event, it's gotta be somebody.
Yes, not to keep it within the family, in that way it doesn't get into rental.
You 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 heard my little thing.
Oh, absolutely.
And same thing.
Yeah, ab- yeah.
Okay, um and other, yeah, I think that that's pretty much it, I just wanted to make sure that I didn't flag anything. The square footage of the accessory apartment specifically is, cause I think you have the combined square footage.
Uh it is, um let me see here. Hits me off my toes on something like that, it's seven hundred and twenty square feet.
So that's just the accessory apartment?
Yeah, correct, the house is uh eleven hundred square feet, so um yeah, it'll be seven hundred and twenty square feet.
Okay. Alrighty, that is all I had, if any members of the board have any questions for myself or the applicant.
Just a note, and again, this is not particularly relevant to the special permit, but a point of information is that the. The overall building footprint is being enlarged because currently the one-car driveway and the breezeway are being replaced. With the two-car driveway or with the two-car garage rather, the the one-car garage with the breezeway. The 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 footprint of the new of the new part of the building is gonna be. Drawing a little bit back from the corners of the front and side corner of the garage, but for extending further.
The footprint will be a little bit bigger, but uh looking from the front, it'll look it'll look the same.
Right.
But we're not going any wider, uh we're we're taking out, it's actually gonna be a little smaller, cause there's a brick facade, it's like twenty-six feet wide now. And we're replacing it with twenty-four, but we are going back a little further.
Again, yes, the 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 overall building footprint is changing a bit.
Yeah.
But that's kind of, that's kind of neither here nor there as far as the permit for the accessory apartment is concerned.
Correct.
It's just an observation. Other than that, it's a straightforward accessory apartment application.
I think you were saying um driveway permit.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Which, where that question will come up, that's.
Yeah, yeah, and like I said, I don't I don't think there'll be a problem, the driveway there, I I I can, we're not really going that much bigger, it's just uh the driveway is. Uh maybe eighteen, sixteen, eighteen feet wide now, I mean, we're only looking to go a little bit wider anyway, so it's it's, I don't think it's a big deal, but. I will address it with the. Yeah, absolutely.
Yep, and and just another note that um you know, this plan, you'll see that the setbacks. This is a pre-existing non-conforming structure, so that is why that is labeled like that, I forgot to, it's in my memo, but I did not. State that out loud, that that is why that was, anyone was concerned.
So that's existing right now, what you see there?
Yep.
This this portion.
Yeah.
And then this is the addition here. And you've you have spoken to the um the building department as well.
Correct, yeah, I'm meeting with them.
If yeah, if the pre-existing. Non-conforming, then they have to.
Yeah.
Yep, they're next.
Sorry, you're you're currently uh you have a hearing coming up with them or you already have?
On Wednesday, yeah.
On Wednesday, okay.
So busy week for me. For you, and we appreciate your time, uh running, being on the board, we know it's valuable time you guys spend around the community, so we appreciate you guys.
If there's nothing else.
I had a question, Dave.
Yes, Prabhu.
Uh going back to the prior similar discussion about the parking on the on the road. Um I'm assuming there is, I know we don't decide that, but I'm assuming because of this uh addition. We are not going to see a situation where additional cars are being parked on the road.
No, so uh the 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 homeowners don't park on the road now and uh they they park in the driveway and the driveway is a little tight. And it's a one-car garage when the driveway is a little narrower than it would be if it was a two-car garage, so there'll be plenty of parking. Um once we redesign it and there there'd be no problem.
Yeah, so with with the with the expansion of the garage, there will be space for two cars to park in the garage and easily space for.
Two to four, two to four in the driveway, absolutely, yeah, and there's only three adults living there with driver's license right now. Uh but they are looking to expand their family down the road like any normal family would, so that's why we're addressing this to have it parking for. Four cars, maybe five, but it'll all be on their property, nothing in the road.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else from the board, any motions?
Well, I'll move that we close the hearing and direct staff to prepare. A uh draft decision for us.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Justin.
He's muted.
Justin?
That's that, after the fact, aye.
Prabhu.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
And Dave votes aye, motion carried unanimously.
Thank you, boy.
Decision will be drafted.
Have a great night.
Good luck.
Thank you for your time. Good luck.
Board, the board will review and approve the decision at our next opportunity. Thank you. And we have one more public hearing, this is a continuation. Of the request for a site, special permit and site plan approval at seventeen and twenty-seven Upton Street.
We ought to grant the continuation at some point for the other one.
We did.
We did that.
Did we?
I think you did, as a matter of fact.
Well, it was a good idea.
Yes.
I'll just give a really quick.
Yeah, where are we, where are we up to, where are we up to on this?
So there was um a few exhibits that were submitted since the last hearing um. Exhibits twenty, where am I, uh twenty-three through thirty-five um.
Just a few.
Just a few, yes, so in response to the requests from the prior hearing, um which uh the applicant did did a good job in in. In responding to all of the concerns that were raised at that point in time, obviously we have more things to talk about today, but. Um I just wanted to reiterate that uh earlier in this meeting, the request to withdraw, the request. Um to withdraw without prejudice, that is no longer um something that we need to concern ourselves with, this is in fact a special permit site plan approval. Um and that request was approved by the board um and is on file with the planning department and is here as well. Um there is a uh other than that, I have the, we can go through and I think I'll just turn it over to Jean at this point. But um I think that probably the best way to navigate this would be to just kind of go through the. Key points um of the uh submittals and the kind of outlining concerns. And then obviously we'll we'll need to coordinate coordinate with our peer reviewers for.
Right.
The process, so.
So hello, everyone, it's nice to see you all again, uh Jean Christie, Principal Engineer with High and Bond. Um Sean, if you could pull up site plans, we can jump right into um some of our changes, um so we took. Feedback from our hearing last time with the planning board, um and then a couple of meetings with the Conservation Commission. Comments from Fiona, comments from Fire Department, peer review for civil and stormwater and traffic. Um and revised all of our drawings, so one of the 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 bigger things that came out of, that's perfect, that overall layout. Um the the, one of the. The loudest topics from our last hearing here was about the pickleball courts, um we've taken them out completely. Um so in the place of where the pickleball courts were, which is in that little section of property. Um to the east of the, yeah, exactly right there, we decided to put. The the resident gardens there, so it's a nice quiet, abutting use to the post office and then the multifamily house just immediately south. Um this also freed up some space that we were allowed to move the dog run area over into, you know, that corner of the property. It was really small and against the building previously, we've now expanded it, um it's got fencing and it's got shrubbery surrounding it. For screening purposes. Um the other amenities that are on the site back there did get reworked a little bit, there's a couple bocce courts, some outdoor seating areas and you know. Gathering spaces for residents as well as um. Some younger playscape type of features that we can have in that location. Um so that was probably the biggest change, really, um. The other parts that that changed as a result of some of the civil and site stormwater peer review was in regard to. Some of the grading on site, we did raise the building up a little bit so we can get better drainage away from the building. Um but just. Um, but generally, the stormwater designs stay exactly as it was previously with previous pavers as our stormwater management feature throughout the parking lots um within the parking stalls, and then on the west side of the project, we still have the infiltration basin. Um. Another part of this, Fiona, if you could go, I think probably one, two, three sheets ahead, um, one piece that came out of um various review sources was, you know, proof of trap or truck maneuvering through the site. So we did a couple swept paths for this. Um, you may not be able to see the colors very well, but there's two different fig- there's two different vehicles there. Fire truck and then um like a box truck, a moving truck. So the moving truck is um the one that would be able to access kind of the the maintenance area, which is a loading space inside the building um to move some of those bigger items when when folks are moving in or out. Um, fire truck, we have it shown using the grass pavers um as kind of a a little extra space to get a fire truck to go around corners and be able to sweep um hoses around corners. That was something we talked about with the Fire Department, what feels like eons ago at this point. Um, so in this diagram, we're showing how that works. And if you go way down to the bottom right-hand side of the page, is where there's another fire truck access similar to the one on the left side. Um, and grass pavers, just to get a little bit more access around the back of the building. Um, we did some utility updates um because of, you know, where we needed fire hydrants for the Fire Department and things like that, from some sanitary sewer updates. Um, and then kind of the next bigger thing was more landscaping information. So we made, we did create and include in this set a schedule of planting materials, and they're 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 specific species. Previously, we hadn't really given that much information yet. Um, but if you want to go down to sheet, I don't know if anybody really wants to see anything, sheet's L four oh one or so. Um, we've also included um some other at building amenity spaces, um. Couple more, I'll go backwards. One more.
One more.
Yep. If you can zoom in a little bit at the back of the building, so this, in in the first floor of the building, um kind of right in the middle of the L, there's a a a clubhouse space, fitness center, and then off the back of that, we have, um, actually, you can't really see it that great. Maybe go back to like two sheets. Three sheets, I'm sorry. Um. You can see better here, yeah. Um, we had some space there that was right outside the clubhouse that wasn't being used for amenity space. So we took advantage of this. Um, and we added, you know, a fire pit area. We added, you know, in addition to the grilling stations and the outdoor dining areas that we had previous Friday, some more social spaces. Um, so that improved our amenity space offerings for the project. Um. We also advanced our lighting design with some photometrics. That's in the end of this this plan set. Um, we do provide pole-mounted lights throughout parking lot, baller mounted lights through the back, the pathway behind the building, and then across the boardwalk. And that's been a topic that we've been discussing with Conservation Commission about lighting of the boardwalk within the wetland area, and so far, we're okay. Um. Let's see. The only other thing I have on my list to note that I think is a difference is that we did add a bicycle, we know we had an interior bicycle storage area a room. Um, we did add another bike storage outside structure um on the west side of the building at the corner. And I think those are the big changes, other than adding more information. You know, we added quite a bit of landscaping detail on here. Um, you know, some definitely more grading detail than previously, um.
My, where is, where is the um bike infrastructure that?
It's an, it's, yeah, I don't know if it's, yeah, it's right there. The bottom left corner of the building. I don't know what number that is.
Oh, bike back and table. Uh, yeah, okay, I see it, right here. Okay, just wanted to make sure. So are there any questions on those updates for the plans before I get into comment letters?
Justin has his hand up.
My only question on the plans, which I saw, I noticed through a letter, not through the plans, but the temporary pickup and drop off.
Mm-hmm.
I remember reading that there was one space added for that right beside the handicap.
Yes.
My only thoughts are, especially if it's going to be used for like school time pickups or by someone that's not a resident, maybe a family that picks up a kid to bring them to school or something like that, or a delivery drop offs for dinner. It might be good to have two closer to the building, even if it means moving one of the residential parking to the to the separate section. This is my initial thoughts on that.
I think we can.
I wouldn't say it's make or break, it's just a thought.
No, I understand that, and um for the board's information, that space is um Fiona, if you could get to sheet, maybe two oh two.
Sure.
There is only one space proposed for that loading, to unload your groceries, bring them in, come back out and move your car if you needed to. Um, and I think that's because, you know, we have, if if I didn't want to take out too many of our official parking spaces, I think, if we're willing to give those that loading space up as one of our one hundred and eighty parking base spaces. Um, we're required one hundred and seventy-nine. We provide one hundred and eighty standard parking spaces, so I say that's our one, and then we have eight compact spaces. So I think we can probably get away with having another one and being comfortable with the number of parking spaces, but that's a a board discussion, I think.
The other uh questions, comments from the board at this point?
I have other questions or comments, but not about the plans, so we can move on and then come back to it.
Yeah, well, I wanna um circle, circle back with any other, you know, questions and comments as we move on through this.
Okay, um, so we did respond to a variety of comments. We did, um Fiona did issue a number of comments, which we responded to. I don't know if you've divened into that as much, or if there's anything we needed to talk about of any of them.
I did get a chance to review, um and I plan on, you know, following up
Okay.
on this as well, but um there's a couple of things, so our letter, we received, you know, I I requested guidance about the waiver request because the way that our by law is written, um, there's not many, there there's some of the waiver requests can't be honored, so I was, I received a um confirmation from council, which I uploaded into the record. Um, we don't have to, you know, delve too much into that unless you'd like to, um but that was just today. So I was, I wasn't able to get it any sooner than that. Um, but there are, but there's a number of considerations there.
Okay.
Um, there's gonna be, yeah, there's, because I believe that there's eleven waiver requests in total.
We have.
Yeah, and some of them are, were requested, you know, you didn't need to actually request them, they're not wait, um, but some of them we will need to um, the the plans will need to be changed.
Okay.
Yeah.
So that just came in now?
It came in today, yeah.
Like, yeah, just just today, so no one's, no one's had a chance to review them.
Yeah.
Okay. So we'll have to get those and digest them.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And probably have another follow-up conversation with you.
It's been hours since that. See, I don't think I knew about it until I spoke with Fiona at what, five thirty or six o'clock?
Yeah, it's it's that, yeah, we, you know, we we're trying to, trying to get what we can as soon as we can, but obviously council is is busy as well, so we're working with what we can do, but um yeah, so what, we can talk about that, um. You answered my concerns about building height, um. The turning and and the confirmation um from Grafton Fire Department was already discussed. We will need a revised traffic report based on the comments from Bowman. Which we, yes. You did a, you did a peer review response.
We did res- bond thirty to MDM.
Okay.
And I didn't think we were issuing a revised response, a revised traffic study. Um, I know, I know our traffic engineer is online. Um, if he has anything to add about the traffic peer review.
Yeah, I can, I can jump in, uh Matt Stouts from Time Bond. Uh, so I guess overall, the traffic comments were pretty minor. Um, and so it's pretty typical, um, that unless the peer reviewer asks, that we wouldn't revise the full study um as long as they were satisfied with their responses.
And we did just get them, these response, our response to comments and additional documentation on Thursday last week, Wednesday last week, so um, I didn't expect them to have anything today. Yep, and Exhibit thirty-two, yeah, it looks like we we were only able to get that information as of today as well, so. It was uploaded once, once we received it. So, so a couple of comments in there, um, Matt, Exhibit thirty-two. You had a couple of comments on that.
That, that's, that's our um MDM transportation.
Yeah, I responded to those uh via email today.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay.
So I think that for now, um Bob is all set to go, but we'll keep coordinating with him as he needs things. Um, the civil stormwater peer view is a little different because we were able to respond to Jeff Walsh's comments prior to our last con con meeting. Um, so he's had them for a while. Expect he'll be able to issue his findings or review of our um response, responses, pretty short order. Um, there wasn't a whole lot of things that needed co- needed a- addressing. Um, there was some real technical stormwater modeling things um, which we were able to accommodate without changing the design. Um, and then a number of items such as why we changed some of the the storms, I mean, some of the sanitary sewer things, um. Lighting was another topic, and then some of the volume, the the cut fill numbers, so things like that were provided to to Graves for review. Um, expect that to be coming back. And then lastly was Fire Department. We did receive a number of comments from the Fire Department. Um, some of them are related more to the architectural side of things, and those are being incorporated into those drawings and designs. Um, but for the the, for, you know, the civil site stuff, um, we were talking about hydrants, about locations of hydrants and how hydrants are served from the main and things like that. Um, but what the biggest topic was reg- was in regard to a signal, um, and the Fire Department was looking for an emergency signal for traffic coming out of the development as well as along Route one forty. Um, the challenge with this is Route one forty is a state-owned highway, and we did not meet signal warrants to justify putting a signal at this location. The only one that was applied, um, that could be applicable was an eight-hour volume, and there's not enough volume on Route one forty to meet that signal warrant. So at this time, we're not proposing a signal at this location.
Well, I wasn't, I I saw the reference to a signal, but I didn't s- I didn't understand where it would be.
I think it was so that when the Fire Department needed to leave the building, that all traffic coming on Route one forty and coming across in, you know, into Route one forty from the development would be controlled, would be stopped, wouldn't be able to come. There's another challenge with this with the um, the railroad tracks, being in such close proximity, that gets a little dangerous and convoluted in terms of signal design. Um, so at this time, yeah, no signal for us.
Yeah, when the Fire Department wants to turn left and the gates are down.
Right, right, it's already a problem. Um, so one thing Fiona that I realized today is I didn't send an updated plan over to the Fire Department with these responses. Do you want me to do that?
Yeah.
I can do that tomorrow. Okay, and then the last thing, I think that was all the comment letters briefly. Um, the last thing that came up in the last meeting was folks wanted to see some more visual about how, what this, what this place looks like, right? So we did, our architectural group was able to um, develop a model, a drive-through model, which is pretty neat. Uh Fiona, it's a huge file.
Mm-hmm, I think we were able to get it up and running, and we should be able to, oh, it's gonna make me um.
So this is, um, and I know that our architectural staff, our folks are on um, on the call if they wanted to chime in on anything, but this is driving from town center down eastward on Route one forty.
Yeah, it's just gonna take a minute to.
It it took a while to download that from my computer.
Yeah.
I can share it. I have it downloaded already. I can share it if you want, Fiona.
Uh, okay, that'd be great. Thanks, Justin. Hold on one second. Actually, you have sharing capabilities now, or?
Not right this second.
Yeah, it it took me quite a while, and then I had to convince my computer that it wanted to play it. But uh, I I was amazed at how good it is, you know, it really accurately shows the 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 existing buildings and whatnot that it shows are um entirely accurate. There's a detail there on the common you're missing. There's a, there's an electrical box.
Okay. We are working to update this, this is, you know, our first, first cut.
Yeah, yeah, um, but I I was, I I'd like to see it without the foliage, you know, in the wintertime. Um, and I'd like to see it coming the other way also. That's, that's my personal vision. You know, I come up that way, um, and I know the common from that direction. So both of those would be much, would be interesting, like I couldn't see any of the parking up by the railroad where the barn is now. Um, I couldn't see anything really. Um, and foliage, I think is probably the reason. I I hadn't realized there was that arch there. That's interesting.
I guess, yeah.
But um, that's just amazing.
Yeah, my, my comments were just, this is a lot, this is a lot more representation than I expected to see. So it was really nice. The, the question I had though is the elevation of this flyby, is that consistently at a site elevation above the road level?
I think it's it's intended, and I know John Fisher and others from architecture are on the call. I think it's from a car.
From, at least my, my perspective, of course, this is not scientific, of course, but it seems like this might be like double the height of a car in in the air, rather than at the actual car height. And I'm using as my reference in part the the archway that we fly through and so- some of the passing cars as it actually goes as well.
Okay. We can look at that.
And you're driving down the wrong side of the road.
Or in the middle of the road.
Yeah, I.
What's this building here? This building on the left.
That's the multifamily home that exists. It's one on, to the, just to the east of the post office.
Doesn't look like that.
Yeah, I'm not sure I could see the post office.
Yeah, the post office there, if you back up, yeah.
So you've taken out the white building that was the historic.
The barn.
The barn.
Barn, that, yeah.
Yeah.
Cause that that was brought up in the last meeting, and you hadn't mentioned it today, so I didn't know.
So there's the post office right there.
Yeah.
And that's the driveway right before it to the auxiliary parking lot.
And these sidewalks, who's putting all these sidewalks in all the way down?
Um, Mass D O, um, I don't know who's putting in the sidewalks on, well, there's no sidewalks on the side of the the railroad tracks. Mass DOT has a sidewalk project ongoing. I think it's ready for construction at this point. That's bringing sidewalks to just maybe past or up to the post office, and then we're proposing sidewalks the rest of the way.
Will they be concrete or they'll be asphalt?
Concrete, I think.
The um, the state control end someplace right around the highway barn.
Right at the, probably the railroad tracks.
Where you are, you know, where you are. Um, and then it picks up again at the bottom of the hill at one twenty-two. So. You, if you come a little ways this way, you can uh only have the town and not the state.
No, and we're, we have a filing with Mass DOT for that work that we are proposing, and they're right away.
Do you, do you know uh what year that Upton Street project is actually programmed to be done?
Um, maybe Matt can help me with that?
Yeah, so I know it's just advertised out to bid in mid-May. Um, it says on the Mass Stat site that um the project is supposed to start this summer. Um, if that's still correct, I'm not exactly sure, but it is on the twenty twenty-four tip. Um, if that's still correct, I'm not exactly sure, but it is on the twenty twenty-four tip. So the, a- at this point, the sidewalks for Mass Style will be in before the development, um, is constructed.
Okay. I've been a little unclear the bounds of that, um, project. I should know because I'm on the Transportation Planning Committee of CMRPC. And I sit on the Metropolitan Planning, the MPO, where we hear about these. But, uh, I haven't seen, I don't remember seeing the, very much about that project. That may, that's probably state money, not federal money paying for it.
Correct, and it, it is mostly a mill and overlay job and they're just adding sidewalks in spot locations. Uh, so it might fall through the cracks in some areas.
No, uh, uh, w- w- we, we mostly see the tip money, the, the federal money. Um, and I, I, well, okay, I'm not sure, I don't.
Jean, do you have anything else at this point?
At this point, no.
Okay.
Happy to talk about anything you'd like.
Just one, one little thing. Um, the, whatever we call this, the, um. The, um, whatever, at Grafton Commons, you do realize that that's the common, not commons out there.
Hmm?
Common singular.
Yes.
Common.
That's what we call it.
The Grafton Common, the gazebo.
Or bandstand.
Oh, no, 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 that, that's a gazebo that played a bandstand in, um, MGM's movie, uh, of, uh, Our Wilderness.
We, 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 we'll never get over the controversy, what do we call that?
No, I'm, I'm thinking of a citizens petition for town meeting.
Alrighty, so before I completely lose track of it, I have on the Q and A. I have a comment from, or question really, from Patty Eppinger at forty-fourth South Street. She was, uh, had her head raised as an attendee for a while, but for whatever reason, she's no longer in the team. But I, we'll put the question out here anyway. As a resident of a perpendicular street, namely South Street, I am extremely concerned about traffic in a very congested area. Most mornings it is extremely difficult to leave South Street. The report says eight hundred and fifty-seven trips are expected from this complex alone on weekdays. What is the typical traffic between seven to nine AM? Is that one percent, ten percent more? So that, that's kind of a, the answer is probably in the, the traffic report. Uh, I'd have to go look it up, but maybe, maybe, uh, someone has a, an answer handy. The traffic between seven and nine AM, and I think, uh, the comment is really looking for how much these morning traffic is increased by this.
Right, during that peak hour, um, that, that's something you can address.
Yep, so, uh, in the morning, the project is estimated to add about sixty-one trips. Um, and that's from between, uh, seven and nine. Um, and then in the afternoon, between four and six PM, it's estimated to add seventy-three trips. And then the Saturday midday is the third period we look at, and that estimate is about fifty trips. Um, and, uh, the comment was correct, the projected daily total, um, is eight hundred and fifty-seven trips.
Yeah.
Um, and just to give a sense of, of the project trips versus cars actually on the road. Right now, there's about eight thousand trips per day on Upton Street. Uh, so it represents a, a pretty small percentage of the trips that'll be on the road in the future.
Yeah, so I think one part of her question was, you know, is there, can you. Describe the increase, if she's specifically interested in the morning, can you describe the increase as a percentage? I think you said sixty-one trips, but is that as a percentage of all the seven to nine AM trips, is that something you, you can tell us offhand?
Uh, I can, I can look into it quickly, uh, and give you a sense. So in the, uh, you have about five hundred trips in the, uh, westbound direction. And about the same amount in the eastbound direction, so say a thousand trips during that peak hour. Uh, so still, so sixty trips added to the thousand total, a pretty, pretty small percentage that the site would be adding.
Okay, uh, let me just continue with the last part of Ms. Eppinger's question. Quoting that improved our amenity offerings for the project unquote, and for the town. Is there any thinking about Grafton itself or just this facility for these new residents? I'm not sure.
Yeah, I think we, we talked about that at the last meeting as well, um, you know, this is a private residential development. Allowing the general public onto private property to use the amenities is a liability. Um, and so that's something that I just wanna make sure everybody considers.
Alright, that, that takes care of the online Q and A, we have a, a hand in the audience here? If you'd like to, uh, come up to the podium or the table, whatever you're more comfortable with and speak.
Hi, Jennifer Thomas, sixty-seven Upton Street. I just would like some clarification, if there are a hundred and eighty parking spots in this complex. A hundred and eighty parking spots in this complex, how does that only improve, only increase traffic by sixty vehicles a day? I'm not quite understanding how that, how, how that works.
Timeframe, not all, not a day.
I understand during the timeframe, but you're saying only sixty people out of a hundred and eighty parking spots are actually leaving the property from six to nine?
Seven to nine.
Seven to nine, it just seems unrealistic, it seems like, it's, the, the traffic study sounds like a bunch of BS.
I can respond and say that, you know, our traffic study, um, was prepared in accordance with our general standard practice for, you know, this kind of work. Um, it is peer reviewed by another professional that the town engages with on a regular basis, um.
Yeah, well, we, we need a traffic study though, we, we've been talking about what's happening in, in that, in that center. And Bob's mentioned, you know, we're gonna need to do a roundabout, we're gonna need, the traffic is, it's really extreme through there. So I would invite you to come between seven and nine in the morning when I'm leaving for work and trying to run across that intersection without getting killed. Um, I, you know, it does seem unreasonable that it's fifty to sixty, I don't know when he did the study. But we do need to consider that because that is the main focus where, I think, was it Patty? Coming from South Street through there, coming from North Street, then there's another angle that comes over here, and then coming up Milbury, all cross-section.
And I think one point is, um, that sixty cars.
Yeah.
Aren't going to the center. They are going different directions, they are going either way.
Come through the center.
Not all of them, some of them can go east on Upton Street.
They can go up to, yeah.
So it's not all sixty are going through the town center, just to clarify.
Correct, okay, well, we agree to disagree.
Well, uh, uh, just be aware, if you are, that the, uh, people coming in front of the library. From, from South Street and the other streets a- around that end of the common. Um, they do have a tough situation there and it's a difficult intersection. So, I'd like that to. I'd like for that to show up as much as it, it can and what, what we're learning.
Jennifer Thomas, sixty-seven Upton Street. I just, I, I, I know I haven't, uh, been paying attention lately, but when we talked about village mixed use in that area. This is not what the public, all those public meetings that I've attended over the years, this is not the vision. We talked about as you come into town, what you see, and this behemoth, it's, it's not Grafton. And it's just so disappointing that this is what we have. We talked about little storefronts with apartments on top, now we have a four-story monstrosity? It's, it's, it's awful and just your eyesight as you drive into the common, you're gonna see this humongous thing. Just doesn't fit in with, with our historic district and it is very disappointing that this is what we got. Parking was supposed to be hidden behind, there's supposed to be cute little storefronts, this is not village mixed use. It does not, it does not fit, so, uh, you know, I'm sorry for coming in late to the, to the discussion. But it's, it's really upsetting and I am a resident on Upton Street and it will affect my traffic. But more so, I'm concerned about the entire town and this is just not what Grafton needs.
This project is allowed under the bylaws regulations. I just wanna make that clear, there's only bylaw does allow for this.
Sure, I mean, it's VMU, right, so it's village, so it can be industrial and it can be residential, or you can have a mix. But what she was trying to tell us is what, what people thought they were getting when they voted on VMU was that. And I think I brought this up in an earlier meeting, we showed the pictures when, when I went to the thing that the, the CRMCP thing. Where we had pictures of village mixed use, what we showed the town was cute shops on the bottom and apartments. That's what we showed everyone and then we voted on it as a town. So you can see where a resident would come forward and say, hey, that's not village mixed use, that's a big apartment complex that looks like a Hilton Hotel. I mean, it's not what we sold people, that's, that's a legitimate comment that she's made.
Oh, I'm not saying it's, it's not a legitimate comment at all, I'm just saying that the bylaw does allow this, um, I just wanted to be clear for the record. And.
Well, I mean, yeah.
Multi-family is.
We follow bylaws, that's, yeah, you're right.
It's just, I just wanted to be clear.
Dan?
Dan Kuescher, seventy-nine Keith Hill Road, uh, there was a mention of the, um, historic district. Is this, uh, property within the historic district?
No.
No.
Okay, um, and so, uh, I, I also just wanna say when, when I voted, uh, on the village mixed use, uh, overlay. Uh, I was aware that this, uh, type of, uh, development could happen there. Um, I, I wouldn't speak for the whole entire town to say what everybody thought, but, uh, that was my understanding. Um, and, uh, I, I think this is what Grafton needs, uh, we need more, uh, rental units in town. Um, and I think putting it close to the center is a, a great spot to put it. We want more people coming to the local businesses, uh, around the common, uh, going to the library, going to the common, so. Just wanted to, I guess, make sure that perspective was, uh, considered, thank you.
Thank you. Continuing with, you know, comments and observations from the board, from the public. I do want to, before I, before it slips my mind completely, I want to, uh, raise a point here. The proposal is for thirty affordable units out of one hundred and twenty-two. If the intent was that to reach the twenty-five percent threshold, that means all units are counted. The sort of, toward the subsidized housing inventory, thirty does not do it, you would need thirty-one. Thirty is less than twenty-five percent of one hundred and twenty-two. And the rules for that basically say that if you divide it by four, you round up any fractional parts. So that the total is at least twenty-five percent. So if the intent is for all units to qualify for SHI, the number of affordable units is gonna have to be thirty-one.
Okay, cause the requirement, the affordability requirement in this zone is.
The affordability requirement in this zone, right, that's, that's why I put it the way I did, was that if the intent was. For all one hundred and twenty-two to get on SHI, thirty-one need to.
We, uh, we'll make the adjustment to thirty-one. In fact, I'm surprised that we didn't have that adjustment already, but it has bounced back and forth a little bit. Because the number of units has bounced back and forth a little bit, as a matter of fact.
Yep, I guess I just wanted to clarify that.
Two-bedroom units and one-bedroom units and that's how we ended up with, uh, uh, the number we ended up with.
Yeah, I just wouldn't want you to be disappointed to find out that, hey, we wanted them all to be on the SHI, but we're one short of making that happen.
No, thank you for that.
Well, we'll make, we'll make certain it gets there, I give you that as my promise, we'll make sure it gets there.
Alrighty, any other questions or comments from the board at this point from, uh, the audience here? Yes, ma'am.
Fifteen South Street, so I do come that way and it is a problem because there's people coming up George Street. And they, I see the backup when they're coming. Is there gonna be a light then? They can't put a light for traffic, cause. No, that would never happen.
There.
You know where like, where, where that crosswalk is.
I, I, I can tell you that there, about twelve years ago, a traffic study was done around the common. And we're now looking at updating that. And among the possible, uh, improvements that that study considered was one or two traffic signals. So although this project by itself doesn't justify, it doesn't, doesn't meet any warrants for that. It's nevertheless possible that as we, as the town tries to address the, 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 the larger question of traffic around and through the common. We're likely to be, to, to come up with some additional proposals that, you know, independent of this project. That way, cause we recognize there's issues with the traffic around there today, even without this project. And there are problems that we would ultimately like to find a solution for, but it's not easy.
Yeah, well, no, I'm one of them.
We have, we have a committee.
We have a committee, what, maybe I'll, because I have this hot idea that I've had for twenty years and no one likes. Um, make the common a roundabout, all the traffic goes counterclockwise around the common. It makes the flow work, you know, you can flow from, from South Street around the corner and down. But also you have a through lane, you know, the lane goes just through and everybody flows through. There isn't any competing traffic coming up the hill and around our side. To try to turn left at the library.
Yeah.
You, that, that's where the trouble is, is that traffic coming, coming across both, both, uh, at, uh. Uh, at, at the old townhouse and at the library. Um, if you, I'm the only one that, well, I, I, there might be one other person. But I wanna.
I have a quick question.
Interestingly, the roundabout was one of the six solutions.
I know, and it didn't get an adequate, uh, consideration in the, in the report that I finally saw a month ago. It was done twelve years ago, they never had a chance to tell them why they were wrong.
Alright, I have a quick question, okay, I couldn't sit here and sound out the whole time. Um, do the traffic assessments we have account for backups? Meaning the amount of cars that back up and sit, or is it just a, a gauge of volume? Because I know on certain streets during those times of the day, right, even on North Street, there'll be, you know, two-tenths of a mile of cars backed up. Waiting to try to get through, right, so there might be a certain volume of cars, but because of the traffic pattern at the common, does, do these reports look into that? Like how much of a backup and how much it might increase or not?
I think Matt can answer that.
Yep, yeah, I can answer that, um, yeah, so as for traffic studies, we look at level of service and also queuing as you describe it.
Okay.
Uh, and when we're looking at queuing, we look at the existing queues or the, the length of, of cars that are stacked up. And then we add our site traffic in, and then we look at the relative increase in those queues, um, as a result of the project trips. Um, and we, so we did find, you know, there are long queues out there today like everyone here is describing. Uh, but the relative impact that the site has on those queues is relatively minor and the, the peer reviewer agreed with that.
Ma'am?
Yep.
Shelley Hall, seventeen Sartell Road, I'm very interested in knowing the details of the traffic study in question here. I'd like to know how exactly the figures came to be what they were, I'd like to know what equations were used. And I'd like to know, uh, also who the peer reviewers were, I just wanna know who all is involved. And, you know, what, whether it's to be trusted or not.
The, uh, all of this in great detail is, uh, under the project, uh, pages. On, uh, the town website.
Okay, so I apologize that I have not, that I'm late to the game also.
Well, most people are, but, uh, you know, they don't know.
Well, until we get alarmed.
We, we have to look there to see.
So, uh, my understanding though was that the results of that, I mean, weren't we just saying that, that you just. The results only became available a few days ago or something?
No, the, the responses to the responses to the, you know, they file something. We send it to.
Okay.
A consultant, he, he comes back with something, they come back with.
Okay, so all of that information is available?
Yeah, and, and they're on the website in the wrong order, I was terribly confused today.
Well, that's.
Cause I opened them in the order that they were on the website.
You're looking for.
Um, and it, I. Some other day. Some other day.
Well, my apologies, um, my apologies for asking something that's already known, but.
You give us a chance to, um, let people know.
If, if you don't ask, you'll never know, right?
Well, true, but it, it pays to do your homework, and I didn't.
I, I'd say to say I had a day or two to read through that stuff.
It's a lot.
There, there, there is an enormous amount of detail in the traffic impact assessment.
Well, that, well, that will be helpful then.
So if we have no, no more questions at the moment, we do obviously. Have a ways to go before this is all done, you're, you're still in the process with conservation. And with all the information just came in over the last three or four days, it's gonna take some time to digest all of that.
It may be a bigger one. Yeah, I think, um, you know, especially given that peer reviews haven't come back with a clean letter, um, we definitely request, uh, continuance.
I mean, among other things, you're gonna have to digest the, uh, the, the question that, you know, that town council brought back to us this afternoon regarding waivers.
Do, do you have a date?
Your preferred date for the next hearing?
We're meeting on the eighth and the twenty-second.
Eighth and twenty-second.
We can, the eighth is a good start for us.
Okay, well, um, shall I?
You shall.
Hmm, I shall.
I, I think a written request for continuation is about to be received.
And I move, and I move that, uh, we grant the request.
Second.
Movement seconded that the board grant the applicant's written request for a continuation of this hearing to Monday, July eighth at seven thirty P M. Discussion of the motion? Hearing none, Justin.
Aye.
Frabu.
Aye.
Andrea.
Aye.
Bob.
Aye.
Dave votes, carried unanimously, you know, you've got some homework to do here.
Homework, see you in a few weeks.
We'll look, we'll look forward to, uh.
Thank you.
What you can bring back to us on the eighth. Thank you, and thank you everybody for participating and giving us your feedback and opinions.
Thank you.
It does look, thank you, it does look, we, we did have a hand raised.
Oh, boy.
I did not see that.
Okay, shall we take the question, the, we've got a raised hand from the public?
Yeah, we, yeah, we should.
Well, is it regarding this?
Yeah, I, I don't know what it's regarding, that's, that's the thing.
Yeah, yeah, you know, if, Angela?
Angela, you just need to unmute, and if, if you have a comment pertaining to the, um, hearing that we just continued. We would ask that you, you hold it, um, until, uh, the, the continued date of the eighth.
Or, or submitted in writing.
Or submitted in writing, yes, thank you.
Thank you, I, I had my hand raised, um, at the beginning of the presentation. For those of us that are zooming in, we can't, our box does not appear, so we can't see ourselves on the screen. So I, I did have it up during the entire comment period, I will put it in writing, I just would like noted for the record that my request. I also have concerns regarding the peer review for the traffic study. It seems like it would be most beneficial to have the peer reviewer present at the next meeting. To be able to provide a presentation on the peer review. I understand the information is on the website, but it is dated June nineteenth, it's lengthy. There are many questions, it's not very readily, easily understandable to those who are in the public. Who don't have a background in necessarily doing traffic studies, so I think to address. The questions that you've heard tonight, it would be very beneficial to have the peer reviewer provide a presentation. For those of us in the, in the public that use this way, residents of Grafton, these numbers do not add up. With what our real life, everyday experience is.
Yeah, I, I will work on that Angela, but yeah, if you could just submit that in, in writing, that would be greatly appreciated, you can send an email to. To myself or planningdepartment@grafton-ma.gov and I'll coordinate with the, with M D M.
Thank you.
Thank you. And sorry, I didn't see your hand sooner.
Yes, sorry about that, I didn't see it either.
Okay, I believe we are, we have completed all of our public hearings, and the one thing we have to circle back to is the staff report.
I will be quick, as I always try to be, but then I end up kind of failing in that way, but, um, so just. Uh, really high level overview, obviously we've been, um, busy with applications, um, to say the least. It's a little crazy in here, um, and it's only two, two of us, so we are, we're doing the best we can, um. I did get confirmation that we got the municipal fiber grant for twenty-seven thousand, so that was pretty exciting.
That, that's.
For the Wi-Fi house.
Of, or, or. You still need the other, you still need money?
Um, we, I won't say no just yet, but we definitely won't need to approach the, you know, cable oversight committee with. Any, yeah, we, we tried to, we tried to not take any of that money, and we were able to fund half the project through the grant, which is.
A, a lot's been going on in the cable committee lately, so.
Yes, no, I, I, I know, I know, so, so that, that was, that was really nice that the, um, that we were able to get that, it was, is a huge relief. And we'll be able to pursue that project in earnest, um.
Great.
And we went, we've been meeting with Ty and Bond about Fisherville Dam, um, so Greg, uh, just for your, um. Knowledge, so we, uh, Fisherville Dam is a high hazard dam, um, in South Grafton. We are partnering with the property owner to, um, uh, evaluate the dam, it's a phase of. Uh, update the phase one report, it's called, and do the, um, per, uh, permitting and design, uh, for phase two and. What's called chapter two, six, three documents, so we were, we issued an R P, Ty and Bond was the respondent. And the lowest bid, we were moving forward with them, we've had a couple of progress meetings, and they've been flying, they're either going out and they've done wetland. Wetland replication and flags, um, they're getting their, they're coordinating with the diving team to go out there. They're, they're, they're really doing a, a great job, and I'm happy to, um, talk about that, I, I will try my best. So it's very, um, niche, uh, what, what's going on right now, but, um, that project is moving along, and we're really happy with the progress. And it's on track for completion by.
I've never seen a drawing of exactly what, uh. What is being, what has needs, there's, I, I think. I always get this wrong, I think the dam includes all of the earth that keeps the water in. And where the water comes over is really a spillway.
Yeah, they're, they're studying the entire area.
Okay, so, so, but, the, okay, so it's both, both the earth and the.
Yes, yes, that's my understanding, yes.
So it's.
Yep.
Fairly good sized.
Yes, no, it's quite, it's, it's quite, uh, uh. Quite, quite a, a really interesting piece of infrastructure, so I've, I've gotten to know it very well, and it's very cool. So we're, we're happy with the progress of Ty and Bond, and we have monthly meetings, um, that I can, you know, report back on. And I'll continue to do that.
It, it'll be great, um, when they get it so that they can close the gates and.
Yeah.
Let the pond be refilled after how long, since the fire?
Early eighties. Early, it, it was my recollection, and this actually before my time living here, but from what I've seen, you know, the. The problems sort of began in like nineteen eighty-two or thereabouts. Yeah, that predates the fire for sure.
Um, we have posted for an assistant planner that's out, out, out on the street, and we're very excited. To be getting, potentially somebody else in the office.
For certain values of we.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. I am very excited to have another, um, hopefully, you know, person, uh, on board to help with, with all of the work that we have going on. It's a very exciting time to be a planner in Grafton, but it is definitely quite busy, and we, we need the help, so that is posted, that's been posted to, um. The T A's office posted that through all their typical outlets, I've circulated it on, um, the Mass Planners List Serve, and I've also posted with A P A. American Planning Association Massachusetts webpage, so, um. Yeah, I, uh, I, I'm happy to answer any specific questions, I have a bunch, you know, I have things that I can kind of run through. But if there's any particular projects that anyone on the board wants, wants to talk about, we have, um, uh, we just closed our wave finding grant survey. Um, today, and we'll be going over those results with the consultant tomorrow, um. And, you know, I, I'll, I'll make those results available and put that, put that on the M D I, uh, wave finding page, but, um. That project is going to be wrapping up relatively soon, um, we had, this is our second survey, um, and we also had a community forum. Um, a few months ago, which, which I felt was, was nice, Andrea went, Dave went, which is great, um, so yeah, so that's, that's. Where, that's the most, it's coming to the top of my head, but there is a lot going on. Oh, one other thing as we do, as part of the hazard mitigation plan, we're required to have a public meeting once a year. With members of the hazard mitigation committee, um. I, it, it's, it's, uh, staff members predominantly, and it's Dave. So we, uh, are slated to meet on the seventeenth of July to go over where we are at with implementing that plan. Um, and also we'll be able to, so let's, uh, well, we have, uh, the agenda is posted, we'll post the meeting materials, and the. Plan is available on our page for, uh, members of the public to review and comment on, and we'll take all those public comments and incorporate that feedback. Um, so yeah, I highly encourage folks in town to, um, attend that meeting. Or provide any feedback in, you know, in writing, or you can call the planning department, um. Yeah.
I, I passed, I, you probably saw I passed on that in my social media, there was a good bit of. People that didn't necessarily see this, uh, you know, with twenty-five thousand dollars and we've got this. This sign.
Finding and branding.
Um, and, and, and wayfinding to me is not the name of the place, it's the how to get to the place. And then you can have the name of the place, so it, it's just, I, I think a lot of people don't know. What's gonna happen, or, you know, where this is going.
Yeah, I, so just for, um, confirmation, yeah, thanks for bringing that up, Bob, so it'll be a, a mix of. Directional signage as well as kind of more like marketing based signage, um, that's, that's what's in the, what's called the. The element hierarchy in the signage world, um, so it'll be, specs will be produced to address both of those, um, aspects. So that's, that's the, um, and that'll be in the final report.
So it's not just the sign that you had illustrated?
Right, it's, but, but that will be the basis, that, you know, the directional signage is, is pretty. It, it's, it's more straightforward, cause there's no kind of aesthetic elements really to those, it's just.
We'll see.
It would be really nice to get some result, I don't know who you're sharing the results to all these surveys, cause there was one during the. Last, um, year during the, um, Wednesday meetings where we had the tent, everybody put in all these comments. And there was another one with the other group that everybody did these surveys, and then this survey, and I, I mean, some of the, even the wording in this one. On the wayfinding survey was like a, a proud place or something, I was like, who puts that, a, a place of pride, I was like.
Pride of place.
Where did that come from, like, I'd like to see the survey results from all these surveys to kind of get an idea of what.
Yeah.
Cause I mean, we're here to serve the people, and I'm like, it shouldn't just be my opinion, or, or one person's, let's figure out what.
Eventually, I think, the, I passed on the push to, um, allow people taking a survey to have comments. I don't know whether it got out there in time to get any comments, I don't even know whether it got incorporated in the.
The, yes, uh, yes, I, I, I saw those comments and I forwarded them and made sure to, um, kind of some, summarize, you know, the key points. And send it to the consultant, um, yeah, that was the consultant's, um, suggestion based on the feedback thus far, but I, I did relate. To him that that is not, uh, a, a, something that the people have been interested in at all, and.
Yeah, I mean.
In favor of, so.
Yeah, basi- based on the, uh, the feedback we got from the previous, from the previous survey and from that, uh, workshop of sorts. That the, the, all the, you know, what was one word you would use to describe Grafton to it, so we, 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 the hope was that out of that, we would get a good sense of a. A, a catchphrase or a slogan that really said, this is Grafton, and we didn't really get anything. At, 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 what, the last time we discussed this, we really, there, there, nothing emerged from that that really. Really stood, stood out as a good, so pride of place ended up being sort of a, well, for lack of a better thing, we'll, we'll, we'll use that as kind of a placeholder, but.
Yeah, but I'd just like to say, look at what happened though when Holden Farms needed something, how many people showed up? And look how much mu- how much food we raise at the Community Harvest Barn, we feed a hun- thousands of people in the state with that food, and. We're just, I think we're a very giving community, we're, it's not just a place of pride, we're just like, really care about one another, and. So it was just a little odd, you know, it's a little.
Yeah.
Yeah, that, that struck a lot of people as being kind of quirky.
We're pride.
Yeah.
Prideful people here.
Yeah, yeah, I, I think, I think the committee, the advisory committee during our, 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 our weekly, our, our monthly rather, meetings said. Okay, that wasn't really what we were going for, but, you know, if, we'll, we'll gather feedback on it and.
We didn't, we didn't come up, some, nothing, nothing, nothing came out and said, this is what we all think, yeah, this.
Yeah.
And there's some other connotations to pride right now in, out in the world, and we just have to be a little careful.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I won't mention it, but, not that, I mean, just proud boys, not, not pride parade, nothing like that, I'm not trying to say anything bad. I'm just saying there are some other things that we just wanna make sure we're not like, being political here, we're just being.
Yeah, the idea was.
Yes, no, I got you.
The idea was to come up with something, a, a slogan or a catchphrase.
It was, it was, yeah, agree.
We, we will get there, and we changed our survey to make sure that we could, ta- you know, we would take suggestions from folks saying, okay, what would you say, or what would you prefer, and I.
Yeah, okay.
I think that needs more work, I think, if you're gonna have, if you're gonna have that kind of a thing. On the sign, you know, first of all, I think Tom Minnie should decide on what it is.
Oh, good point.
Yes, yeah, I mean.
Again, they just tend to vote on whatever we tell them.
And, and obviously we're gonna not.
Yeah, we can do it along with the gazebo, uh.
Oh, jeez, Bob, no.
Yeah, of course, one option is.
Careful, Bob.
With a gazebo, is it a gazebo or a gazebo?
Well, one option is not to have a slogan on the sign.
Yeah, that's, that's also, that's, that's an option as well.
If you, yeah, yeah, the idea was that the red, the sign, you know, it'd be in, in pictures, images, or words would sort of.
Yes.
Say something, what's distinctive about Grafton.
It'd be, it'd be easier if we just had like a survey that had just all these little pictures, like a picture of a bathing suit and a picture of a softball. And you could vote what you didn't, what doesn't match, and then you'd end up with something, I don't think people are able to come up with this on the road.
Yeah, it is, it is definitely a.
Two leaves on one of them, I was like, we're not Vermont.
Yeah, no, it's, it's, yeah, it's definitely been, yeah, interesting.
We'll see what comes out of it.
It's nine thirty, I'll shut up.
So yeah, with, with that, you know, I will also shut up now, because I feel like I covered most of my, most of everything, but I do, I just want to reiterate. There are specific questions, um, about anything that's going on that I didn't mention. Um, okay.
Anything, anything anybody wants to ask of staff at this point? Um, if not, we'll move on to reports from planning board representatives on town committees and C M R P C, if, if any. Anybody have anything to offer?
The only thing I'll add is the community preservation committee is currently accepting applications for projects to bring to fall town meeting. So if anyone has any ideas for a project that falls within the tenants of the C P A. For, you can certainly submit for that, you can. Contact our chair of, probably the best, like John Stevens, who'd be able to help for any comment about that, or me directly, I can help direct you.
And, I guess, can I ask a quick question about, uh, what was the outcome on Thursday regarding eighty-seven Milford? If anything? The, the Grafton, I know the Grafton Railroad is looking at the property as well, but we, this board wrote a letter of support, so I was just curious.
Yeah, I'll say I have not watched that meeting yet, I was not able to attend Thursday.
Oh, okay, all right, no problem.
I don't, I don't know for sure, but I, I intend to watch it, I, I got a high low from someone that's not on the committee that. Basically, it's, it seems like it's messy and not solved yet, but I'm gonna watch the meeting, get firsthand knowledge.
Okay, yeah, no, no, didn't mean to, yeah, put you on the spot or anything, I also didn't watch it, Justin, so I don't know. Okay, yeah, no, no, didn't mean to, yeah, put you on the spot or anything. I also did watch it, Justin, so I could have done that myself. Um, okay, thank you.
Any other re, reports from planning board representatives and town committees and C M R P C? If not, any other items which may lawfully come before the board? We don't need to vote to extend the meeting duration past ten o'clock unless somebody really wants to hang out here for a while longer.
I move, we adjourn.
Okay, I second it.
Move and second that we adjourn. Justin?
Aye.
Frabu?
Aye.
Andrea?
Aye.
Bob?
Aye.
And Dave votes aye. Motion carried unanimously. We are adjourned.